I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lakeport Planning Board, Thursday, January 24th, at 7:30. And on our agenda, number one is to meet with Mr. Ken Motta from Field Engineering for Site Plan Review for 14 Harding Street. Mr. Motta?
For the record, Ken Motta from Field Engineering, I'm here representing Farrell Storage. If you recall, we came before this board back in November for kind of a pre-application presentation and kind of like set the stage on where we were going with this proposed building expansion and various site improvements. We also talked about our request for the density bonus and how we would be complying to the architectural standards of the zoning bylaw and the site plan review standards. Essentially, the plan that you have here today is essentially the same plan that we looked at back in November. We did do some tweaking as a result of one of the comments that came from one of the board members regarding fire accessibility. And we worked very closely with the fire chief subsequent to that meeting. We went down there, we actually took one of the fire trucks and actually entered the site through the front entrance over here, drove it around the backside here, drove it around from Millennium Circle here. And we worked out designated filing around the new building here and then around like the main buildings here to come out now. The fire chief was satisfied with the fire access and we also confirmed the two, there's two hydrants that are going to service the site. One is located in the back here, one is located up in the front over here. So we coordinated with the City of Taunton Water Department. We flowed this hydrant over here, no problem, no operational problems with that hydrant. The biggest challenge was finding where the water line was that came, that fed that hydrant, which we did. We found it coming in from Richmond Street.
Okay, so this is not on your property?
Yeah, it comes in through, Farrell actually owns a strip of property that goes all the way out to Richmond Street. And that was the original pipe that came in that fed Millennium Circle prior to the redevelopment of the whole park there. So I have here, this is a letter from the fire chief that pretty much like wrapped up what we were looking at here. And I apologize for this not getting into the package before you decided on my fire.
Thank you for bringing it.
Well, we pretty much agreed. I mean, the chief said when we're looking at turning radiuses for purposes of the apparatus, looking at a 55-foot wheelbase vehicle, we were able to maintain that. We did shift the building just slightly, like five feet back towards the rear of the, you know, towards the rear of the parcel there so that we could get the proper turning radius to get around these units and to come back out this way here. He also said that he would like to see a minimum of 20 feet. So we checked the separation between all of the buildings. All of the buildings are meter exceed that. The main aisles actually over here are like 30 feet through this main aisle here. The remainders are anywhere from like 22 to 24 feet. Again, on his item number two, we did test both the hydrants. Everybody was satisfied with the hydrants. And he has a, the fire department's got this knock-lock system that they want to see integrated into the gate controller here. That's been put on, that's been put into the scope of work for the final construction drawings on the site here when we file for the building perimeter application. So the other issue that we had was we were going to, what was regarding the site drainage. The site drainage in its present condition, just all of this impervious area here drains towards the, towards the northerly side of the site. There's a series of existing leaching catch basins that are located at the ends of the aisle here. There's no outlets to this, basically it's all recharge into the ground. Very well drained soils here. It's all sandy gravels and, you know, very low water tables. What we did when we brought in the new building here, we looked at the entire, did the entire design for the Millennium Circle, which we had done. I'm going to show you this on the aerial so you get a better idea. This is an aerial view of the entire, did the entire Lakeport Industrial Park. In 2004, when GE Capital came in and bought up all of these lots in the back here, there was a modification to the subdivision plan that originally created Millennium Circle. And it was, there was an agreement between the buyer and the owner that the existing detention basins that were on the previous plan were moved and a big detention basin was constructed in this area here. Now, this basin was sized to accommodate the entire buildout of the park. And as you can see from the aerial here, I mean, we're pretty much there. So what we did is we took the drainage from the site and we tied it into a 24-inch pipe that runs into Millennium Circle here. Then there's two twin 30-inch pipes that come across the GE Capital site, goes into the huge recharge system over here and around the back here. We updated the analysis that we did back in 2004 just to reflect, you know, some of the current conditions. For example, this building here, it was only this building here at the time back in 2004. So we brought this building in into there and we brought in the additional, obviously the additional impervious area that we're contemplating on our site here. Ran the model again. The model calculations worked out, worked out fine because there's this section of Millennium Circle that'll probably never be built. It's built, it's built from Harding Street, comes around the end here and pretty much they start there right here. There would be no valid reason really to build a section of Millennium Circle because this is all GE Capital. If they did, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't serve any purpose for any frontage or anything like that. This lot already has frontage on Millennium Circle. So again, we looked at the analysis, updated the analysis. Hydraulically, everything would work fine in the detention basin. We weren't expecting any surprises, basically. It was oversized to begin with, you know, back in 2004. So it was pretty, I mean, it was pretty cut and dry as far as like what we're going to do with the drainage here. So we've just piped everything. We added, we added some additional catch basins where we need to accommodate the grades here along that main, along the main aisle here and tied it into the, tied it into the existing 24-inch pipe here. We checked the capacity in the pipe as part of the analysis and everything's fine.
Who's responsible for maintaining those catch basins?
The onsite catch basins will be, will be Farrell. On Millennium Circle, there's an association of the lot owners there. And that was part of the original commitment of, see Bobby Decroche owned all of this. He owned this parcel and he also owned all of the Lakeport Industrial Park. He set up an association way back when. And all the owners in the industrial parks share the responsibility for the maintenance of the system.
So will the association documents be revised to include the change to the feeding of the water?
No, because there were, in the association documents, there was a blanket, there was kind of a blanket easement that was, that was reserved by Bobby Decroche that gave him the rights of access and to use the stormwater management facilities for this particular lot.
Okay. Does the HOA maintain reserves for maintenance?
To be honest, I don't know, I don't know much details of how the association has worked out. I just recall that from, you know, from the original, the original commitment.
They're still active. They're still active.
Oh, sure. As long as it's, as long as the residents, yeah.
It gets recorded with the land.
They came before us for something or another within the last five years.
Yeah.
Have you seen the Architectural Zink?
I haven't.
Because you had asked him before I broke down.
Well, that's a big improvement, isn't it?
Yes.
You know?
It's quite a business.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Quite a business.
I say I'll do the best I can with the architectural, so I'm civil, you know? They were giving their march and orders. When we met in November, they were giving their march and orders. They were giving, they were giving a copy of the, of the pre-application narratives that you need to comply with this.
Do you know what the light green color is? Do you know what that finish is?
That finish, yeah. I have some, I have some samples in the Jeep if you want to see it. It's like a textured stucco.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is it an EPIS?
What's that?
Is it an EPIS exterior, insulating?
Oh, yeah.
Finishing system?
Yeah.
So it's an EPIS system?
Right.
Okay. So it's an insulation?
It's a thin metal, it's a, it's a thin metal panel. It's got a stucco finish on it and then it's got the insulation. I think it's like maybe like three inches of insulation on it.
But I think if you have a problem, you can pull it off, right? If you have a problem, it can be pulled off unlike stucco which is covering.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, so it's a panel?
I do have, I do have sample. I'll grab them.
That's right.
And the little dark green doors, those are going to roll up? Are those roll up on the bottom?
On these here, yeah. Yeah. But those will be out of sight. This here, you're looking at the west elevation of the main building?
Sure. You're not going to see it.
Which would basically be this here. So what, essentially what you're going to be seeing from the line of sight on Harding Street is going to be?
That right there, yeah.
The top left.
Do you want some help?
I can handle this, yeah. What essentially you're going to see is this first, is the south elevation here?
Mm-hmm. Do you remember where we left off with the storage of trucks on this parcel? Did we talk about that or what? We talked about that?
Boat vehicle, RV, storage, if any?
None planned. I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the features that we're, you know, at the current time, we have, we have car storage because there's a lease agreement with one of the car dealers here. So there's car storage here and there's car storage here. These existing storage areas are going to be, are going to go away once there's a redevelopment here.
Yeah, you're eating it up.
Yeah, so as we said in the narrative, there's no outdoor storage. And there's no indoor vehicular storage.
Great. That's great.
Yeah. Yeah. It really is a win-win. I mean, when you look at the existing condition now and what we're, you know, what we're proposing for as far as like creation of green space, enhanced buffers, and we're doing the best we can with the front of the buildings, we're providing, you know, plantages in the front here and providing a whole new front entrance there. I mean, this is their business. They really want to do a good, they really want to make a good front door over here, obviously. It's in their best interest, so.
It's good that they're on cars there. Not that cars aren't allowed to be there, but if you're going to have cars there, you have to build drainage. This way you don't have to build drainage, but the two.
Well, you still do it because of the paved access aisle, so I mean, you have to provide some.
Where you have, where you have lumen seed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And if you want to put cars there, you have to pay.
I like it.
Me too.
Any one?
Looks good. Motion to. What are we, are they, what are you asking for here?
Site Plan Review.
Oh, yeah. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all is better.
Aye.
So that, so that would include the density bonus too?
Yes, sir.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, sir. The, I think there was one letter, I didn't quite finish reading.
Board of Health?
Board of Health, yeah.
Board of Health, yeah, yeah, yeah. I spoke with Kevin today. I sent him, I sent him all the information I had on the wreckage system. We're in agreement, I mean, before we go for a building perimeter application, we'll either, we're either going to do a Title V inspection or if one, I have the owners right now looking to see if one was actually done when they, when they transferred the property from Decroche. So they're still looking at that, but we'll take it.
This is only for the office anyway.
Right, right. It's not a big, well, we're not talking the big JUCI, so, but we'll do whatever they want. We have to.
Yeah. Yeah. So however, it's not our, not our problem.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate you bringing the letter from the fire department.
Yeah, I was kind of glad it was Mike O'Brien, because they might have had different opinions between Dan and Mike. So we got Mike.
Oh, yeah.
The new fire chief to sign.
Yes.
I like that.
It'll be a good time to go back and see how the water flows on those properties.
If I had read it first, I wouldn't have said anything.
Why didn't, when Marks came before us, why didn't he ask for no outdoor storage? Because he's got outdoor storage.
I don't know, other than the fact that he's got so much land.
Yeah, he does.
This is, this would be restricted because he would.
Yeah, yeah, that's a small.
I mean, he wants, he wanted to expand. He wanted to go for the density bonus. I mean, so you don't go for the density bonus and allow them to store outside because he wanted to cover more of his lot. That's what the density bonus does.
No, I got that. I was just wondering why we didn't.
Because.
Doesn't matter.
Marks wasn't looking for a density bonus. He just had more land to it. He's got, he owns all the way down to the.
Yeah, but we still could have maybe put some guidelines on that.
Could have.
I know that.
We had a problem with it.
Yeah, I know that we.
Where are we going to sign?
For this board.
What, who are you going to sign?
Plans?
Plans?
What, do you want original or are we going to do?
Yeah. Do you want us to sign one and have you?
I was going to ask, what's the procedure from here? I mean, do you go, do you go a letter or?
Sign the plans, right?
Yeah.
So it's easy?
Yeah.
Want to do this after?
No, we might as well do it now because.
And there should be a cover, like a one paragraph covering letter saying what date he was here and.
Did you get a letter?
What's that?
Do you get a letter? Do you get a copy?
That's what I'm asking, say about you. We get, we.
If you want one.
Yeah.
We don't need to sign this one.
Negative. No, we just signed the site plan.
I think we need one for building stuff. Can we get the whole package over to him?
And the other, the other thing, this one happens to, this is a budding Taunton. Do we send Taunton a copy too?
I can check.
You know, Taunton sends us copies of all their stuff.
You don't have a signature?
That's usually the case with a special permit. Special permit or bearings.
Yeah.
When you're like in a neighboring town like that. I do a lot of work myself.
Okay. Okay, for site planning.
Put a signature block?
I can.
We'll need one to sign it.
Yeah, we need one.
Do we want to just?
Would you be able to do that? How soon do you need this? What are you, what are your plans?
I can, I can update the plans. I can put a signature block in and have it for you for the next meeting.
Perfect. Is that good for you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not going to happen tomorrow. We have a lot, we have a little while before we, before we get the package together for the building perimeter application, so.
Yeah, and you still have to go for the Title V, right? Fine, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Yeah.
Awesome. You want to take these with you or not?
I think we'll keep one copy.
Yeah, we don't need all of them.
I'll try to, you want to take them?
Okay.
Well, it'll save Kathy from carrying them off the cart.
How many want me to bring back for a signature?
Four.
Four sets? Yeah, okay. Just, would just a cover be fine? You want the signature blocks on every sheet? There's nine sheets to the set.
Just one's fine.
One's fine.
The cover's fine.
Just the cover?
Sure.
Do you want to take these, Ken?
We'll leave that one with Kathy.
Get this one, Kathy.
Okay. Item number two is to review the petition from the Board of Appeals for Chaney, 153
I think this is, I think, but I'm not going to comment on this. We typically don't.
What's that?
We typically don't say anything.
Right.
So, motion to no comment for CBA on this matter. Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
You already seconded?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay.
But this is.
I don't even know what the locust shows this slot. I don't know where it is.
Right, but.
Do you know where it is?
No. Oh, I know, I know roughly the neighborhood, but it just.
Where is it?
No, I mean, it's not drawn to scale. It's.
No, it's not 10 feet from the property line.
It's, no part of it is to scale. You can't tell anything about what it is. This is a. This is the.
Oh. 55 by 24 is right.
That's not a small thing.
No, that's a huge.
How come the 10 foot plus or minus, it looks bigger than the 24 foot?
Yeah. And how come the 24 looks different than the 24 next to it?
Right.
And, oh, it's just funny, but for what it's worth, this, this lettering is the default. When you do your first AutoCAD, you know, when they let you use a sample of it for free, this is the lettering that you get with it before you switched it over to something that looks like an architect drew it or something. Like this. But it's just, you'll handle it later on.
So do you know where it is?
That's your signature, that's from '07.
Yeah. For formula.
What is a Morton building?
It's a steel.
Steel building.
Yeah. And they're fairly, we have a few in town.
Yeah.
And they tend to be big.
If you wanted to build a barn these days, it's a thing to do.
Yeah.
It's the right way to do it. It's easy to insulate if you want.
Go up quickly.
It's inexpensive.
Go up quickly. Put them up quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they won't fall away.
They don't rot.
Well.
Rusty?
They're, they're really thin. But.
I hate the way they look.
What?
I hate the way they look.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what is next to the property to see what that building is going to be close to. Other neighbors or.
Well, it's, it's next to the right of way that goes back to the rear of Robert and Sandra Doherty's property.
Oh, I know where that is.
Number three on the agenda is serpent update, which we're going to receive next week.
Yes.
Or next meeting.
Meeting was last night, so.
Yes. Then number four on the agenda would be to, do you have anything from Airbnb?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I do. And it's something I'd like to, to say to the camera. Because they, Kathy actually was kind enough to copy all of the stuff that was, you know, the entire act and the frequently asked questions. For what it's worth, if your, if your time is short when you're reading all this stuff, the frequently asked questions are a lot more valuable than, than reading all that stuff. I didn't know she was going to do that, so I typed up a, just some short notes. I tried to put it onto one page. Of course, taking that much legalese onto one page doesn't, but at any rate, I thought they did a great job. What they, what they did was they took an act that's already there and it was a room occupancy exercise. I think it's from sometime in the 90s because Lakeville had already, we've already signed on to that act and we've signed on at a rate of 4%. Now, this is 1995. This is way before anybody had ever invented Airbnb. This was meant to be used for regular bed and breakfast or motels or, you know, other kind of uses that were, you know, legal at the time. But now, this also just takes Airbnb and makes it into one more use of, you know, it just adds it onto the list of, of stuff and it takes them quite a few pages to be able to do that now. And so what it did is it established some of the rates, but it didn't establish all the rules yet. The Department, the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development is going to set up the regulations for this and set up a system of, you're going to have a certificate if you want to do that. You have to get the certificate from the state. The Department of Revenue will know that you have the certificate and will expect you to have a return, you know, returns like they have for other kind of businesses. But they haven't designed that yet. And they expect this, this act to go into effect in July of this year. And they also have to do it by a public hearing process. And they said they're going to do it by a public hearing process. I think in this state these days, the public hearing process takes longer than now to July. I mean, it usually does. This is just another one of these ones they're trying to rush through, but that's not our business. So I'm just telling you what they said. And, and you really don't expect anything really, you know, crazy to come out of that. You just expect to be a whole bunch of. You just expect to be a whole bunch more pages. The, so this doesn't really change the Airbnb stuff or do anything to hurt the Airbnb operator, except that the state wants 5%, plus they get another 0.7% because of some other thing, and then Lakeville gets 4%. They collect all the money, and they give Lakeville the 4% at the end of the year along with their school money, along with the local aid. I mean, if we don't do anything at all, if somebody in town is doing this, and it goes into the general fund. It's not earmarked for anything, and they don't want us to do that. Now, there's other things that can happen. The other highlights that I put here in this list of things, they get the certificate. The town is allowed to establish all the ordinances and bylaws that it wants, further regulating this. The town could, for instance, say that it's illegal in Lakeville to do Airbnb and then, and go to court and defend it.
Right.
And for possibly a long time. I mean, but, but it, but the state allows you to, to do whatever, whatever you want with it. You can regulate it, you can, or...
So our existing Board of Health rules that are in place currently, we could, so...
That would be perfect, that would be all right. If it's all right, otherwise legally. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you can do things to them that you're not allowed to do to them.
Of course not.
But you can do all the, all the legal things, plus you can ask them for, you can get up to 3% more, above the 4% as a community impact fee. And you'd have to, you have to do a bit of explaining of why you need the fee, and, but you'd have to collect it yourself. You'd have to get the state's records and, and make sure that they build, they build the people the extra 3%. And then you'd have to collect the 3% from the individual operators. And some people would, are going to argue that that 3% might not be, it might cost more than 3% to collect it. Because now that's a separate set, you know, a whole nother separate set of paperwork that the town is doing. Homeowners, homeowners associations are perfectly welcome to prohibit them if they like, or condo associations, or an individual building. I mean, if they, if you do one of these elderly housing ones or something like that, there can be, there can be an agreement struck the way agreements are normally done. And you can prohibit it, or limit it, or, you know, limit in any number of ways.
So I would imagine that a neighborhood could, if they didn't, if they currently had covenants, could have those covenants amended? Okay.
But the neighborhood would, it would have to be, it would have to be, it would have to be a group.
Oh, everybody in the neighborhood would have to agree.
It would have to...
Yeah.
However they, however they normally do that, a majority of the people of a group that's already registered with the, with the registry as a condo association could do it. You couldn't just get a bunch, a group of people that agreed with each other that Saturday morning.
I'll put on when the builder does it, so... You can do the math towards, as long as you had full agreement with all the property owners, which is hard to do, I think.
I don't know, but...
Well, with condos, a condo association can, can do things that doesn't have full agreement with...
But she's not in an association. You're talking about a covenant.
Yeah, recorded with the land, yeah.
Yeah.
But there are also neighborhoods in town that have an association.
Yes, there are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those associations could...
They could vote to do that, and however their, however their condo association rules are for, whether they have to be unanimous, or super majority, or just plain majority, or whatever, however...
Someone like Haskell's.
However they decide, they decide.
They have an association, things like that, yeah.
Yeah, I like the...
And...
So, so would you think that this planning board would, should go over this and present anything to, I mean, at a later date? Do you think it should be us that comes up with something? Because you know it's going to happen. It's going to go to ZBRAC, and they're going to want to, if they want to do anything, but do we want to spearhead something? Like put some kind of, you don't know?
I, ZBRAC is an ad hoc committee that sometimes meets and sometimes it doesn't.
Exactly.
We can't count on...
No, we're not going to count on... I was just wondering if this board is considering, like, coming up with something?
I'm asking.
You're asking, okay.
I'm asking, I'm asking, I, you asked the question for me.
What do you think is appropriate?
The, the part of the, without having, being basically lazy, one of the, without them having written the regulations yet, and without having any public meetings on their part, not, not our public meetings, but this is the public meetings that the state holds with their people, and they, they put on a grand show of it, and they get a lot of letters from a lot of people, and it actually changes what it says here. Without knowing what the exact regulations will be for the state, I would hesitate to start getting involved with writing regulations for the town.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because they're likely to write them for us. Unless, unless you think that there's a lot of people in town that just want to get rid of this entirely. I, I, I don't see it that way.
It does bring in some revenue.
I don't see it as a sort of thing that you...
It does bring in some revenue, but here's the thing. I think we're going into, you know, potentially, this is a new technology, right? I mean, I'm amazed at how quickly this industry grew, the sharing economy, these things grew very quickly. We have a very large group of single-family homes, very large single-family homes, which over time, depending on how demographics change, you could see a greater usage of this than you see today. So I think whatever we do, we should be planning for the longer term, so that we're not...
That's why I'm wondering if this board would take that up and run with what we want to do, ask the town for, instead of having someone else coming up with...
A plan.
A plan, yeah.
I wouldn't even know where to start.
I wouldn't either.
Providing regulations for this and...
I wouldn't either, but...
I mean, I'm, I'm dead set against, like, a condo building turning into an Airbnb type of thing, then it seems to me almost like it'll end up as a timeshare, and I don't think there's any need for that in Lakeville.
There, you can have all the horror stories, plenty of them available for people misusing this. When you, when you look at the box, the last thing that was down here was, I just put the definition in of short-term rental, and it's, it's, it's not, we had people come in here that were complaining about their neighbors doing something. Well, that, that wasn't a bad thing that can happen. I mean, that was just a minor bad thing. They were parking on the wrong place somewhere. But some of the things, they, there are people that don't live anywhere near, you know, they just buy up a building and use the entire building, you know, as...
Yeah, I can see potentially looking at this closely for our town, so I guess I'm concerned that we'll... I know you can't do anything right now, but you want to take a good look at it. After all, this has been settled and come up with what maybe the planning board thinks would be appropriate.
I don't know who else would do it.
Well, if we have rules in place, and then the state makes rules on top of it, do our rules not be ground fathered? They can't just overwrite what we, if we have an ordinance in place, and the state has this, and then they build this? I mean, I'm not familiar with...
Yeah, but like Zink said, they may, the state may cover some of our issues anyway, you know? They may have them in there anyway. We might be wasting...
Time and resources, yeah.
Time and resources to do something that might be covered anyway. Zink said that. They might take care of some of the questions we may have. Right now, it's not all resolved, so I guess it would depend on us. I, I do think it's going to be a hard task to come up with something that everyone's going to agree on. And the town. Maybe we could send out a questionnaire about it. You know, how they do on other things, and how, you know, how the town feels about it, something like that. When the time comes, it's not now.
Questionnaire the master plan committee might send out.
Yeah, it's not now, but, yeah.
Well, I am troubled by the definition, you know, short-term rental, you know, what that, the way that language reads, you know, there's a very big difference between somebody who rents a home, like I'm thinking if there was a college student, and it was a friend of my son's, and I wanted him to rent him a room while he went to college at Bridgewater State, and he was living here part of it, part of the year, does that, am I now responsible for paying 7% to the, you know, what, 9 and 1/2, almost 10% to the state? I wouldn't think so, because I'm not, you know, that's, that's a diff, what's the definition of a short-term rental? To me, Airbnb is somebody that's turning over, it's turning over...
That's what I'm thinking. I don't think like a rental for, like a college kid to go to, no.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't fall underneath the same umbrella.
No, it shouldn't.
All the accommodations are reserved in advance.
That's so old.
Right. Well...
Because you could go into Airbnb and say, I want to rent that room for the next four months, and that's a short-term rental.
Yep, that is. That would be.
So...
And, and that would, so that would mean that...
That's true, yeah.
That's what would happen.
Under...
Well, you want a better definition of short-term.
Bob, in the Board of Health, it had something in there that I think was a little closer.
I don't, I don't have it with me, but you're right, they do, they do have something.
Yeah, that...
So there's things to look at still.
Yeah.
We're just going to wait for it all to fall out. But you think they did a pretty good job of getting this together?
I think, I think so far, yeah, because they allow, they don't really force anything on the town. But the nice, but the nice thing about it is, is that they've, they've identified it as a, as a use. And now you can deal with it.
Now you can start.
Instead of saying, well, this is just something that some people do. Now, now here is a legitimate use, and you can, you can either allow it, or disallow it, or tax it or not tax it, or do something with it, rather, rather than wonder whether you belong there at all. The state will figure out whether it belongs there or not. The state will figure out whether it wants its 5.7% and, you know, and a four... There's an awful lot of this apparently going on around colleges.
Oh, yeah.
It's just a, just a perfect...
And sporting venues.
Because it's so much, it's so difficult to get a legitimate... You know, to get all the things together for an apartment that makes it safe, when you have all, when you have all those kids around, to, to, just, just to check off all the, all the fire extinguishers and exits and stuff like that, is a difficult thing to do.
Mom, the Board of Health does follow up on rental properties in town, so...
There is a...
I think for this type of thing, it should be the building inspector, not Board of Health. Because they have to, they have to inspect the structure.
Maybe both.
Yeah, they have to inspect the structure.
That might be, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you hear every year of...
Of a porch falling down, that's immediately what I think of.
That's what happens, it happens all the time. That's what, that's how Brighton was built.
They all go out the porch and it falls down, somebody gets hurt, or...
Right. Yeah, and I've been at the building department in the city of Boston, when somebody came in and said, why can't I use my porch? I just built it.
Yeah.
But you don't know.
The inspector said you did not take a permit out to build it.
It's a good idea, it's a great idea, have both.
Yeah, and you have, you know, spruce four by fours, dressed down to three and a quarter by three and a quarter. Why can't I have 30 guys out there and a keg?
And a keg.
Yeah, and, and no hangers, on the joist.
The FAQ page that Kathy provided for us has a definition of a short-term rental that's, I think, good. I think that's really perfect.
Oh, good.
I don't have any question on that.
The one I have down here is, is copied word for word and, and semi, semicolon, from semicolon, from the law, instead of using that, to just so you...
Okay.
Because I was ready to change it a lot, but now I'm just going to recopy.
Okay.
That, that last one is recopied word for word.
Yep. Thank you very much, Zink.
Yeah, and if we hear a lot, we should just expect to hear from people. If we hear a lot from people, then we have to do something. If we don't hear from people, we wait for the regs.
Right.
Right. I wouldn't know where to start.
Yeah, I would, I really would.
Until there's a problem.
Well, I, I know exactly where to start. You ask Serpent what they're doing and what they have for a model, and then you ask town council to, what are the other towns doing, and ask them for their model. I, I wouldn't try to invent something myself.
I think they're all leaning on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. That's good. Now, next on the agenda is the meeting minutes for May 10th, June 28th, November 8th. Is anyone there?
Yeah, the May 10th ones, I would make a motion to approve. I read these ones.
You read them?
Yep. These ones I read.
I'll second that then, if I believe, I trust by them.
May 10th, all in favor?
Aye.
June 28th, I wasn't here, so I can't quote.
I don't think I saw that one. June 28th, I did read that one, but I would make a motion to approve that one, too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I have to stay. And the November 8th one is the big one, and I did read that one, and that one I'm also okay with. That one's worth rereading. For fun.
Really?
For fun.
Humorous.
I told you so.
What?
I told you so. That's what that's going to be sometime.
Okay. I'm going to have to read them. So, Zink, second on that one?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next meeting is Thursday, February 7th, here, 7:30. I don't think there's any old business. I don't think there's any new business. You don't have anyone here?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll take a second on that.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.